Okay. You want me to figure out the rolling tape? You'll figure out the rolling tape. We were tracking down lots. Yeah. And they're kind of spread. I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
They're all.
Okay.
Three words for you. Okay. Do you want me to figure out the rolling tape? You'll figure out the rolling tape. We were tracking down lots. Yeah. And they're kind of spread. I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
They're all.
Okay.
They're spread.
She just like.
Three words. 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 Okay. There we go. I'd like to call the order of the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for August 18, 2025. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom when technology is possible. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forms to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make sure the discussion is clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cammons?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Peake?
Here.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Norm, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Legits?
Please rise and face your flag. Now, state your pledge.
The Pledge of Legits to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our individual justice for all.
John, would you like to?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. I move to approve the agenda being.
Good luck with this.
I move to approve the agenda hearing item number 5A prior to item numbers 2A and 2B, and the consent calendar and continuing items 4A and 4B to a date uncertain as requested by staff.
And Commissioner Maza, I believe you're meaning to say in continuing items number 4A and 5B?
I thought I did.
Oh, you said 4B.
Okay.
I'll second.
And Chair, would you like me to call the roll?
Please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Yep.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 8, 2025.
Okay. We don't have any ceremonies, so we're going to go right into item 5A.
Do we have a staff report or anything?
Uh huh.
Oh.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
Joyce is going to give our presentation today.
Good evening, Commissioners. I made.
I'm sorry. Am I supposed to? After, I'll do public comment after her presentation?
Power point up.
Okay. Thanks.
Did you want to read the opening?
Sure. I'm so sorry. Yeah. Let me give you the description.
That was easy.
5A is a zoning text amendment number 25-003, an amendment to Title 17 zoning of the Malibu Municipal Code to update the regulations related to ADU or accessory dwelling units. Good choice.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Leonard and members of the Planning Commission. Good evening. The item before you tonight is consideration of amendments to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance as found in the Malibu Municipal Code. On January 8, 2024, the City Council approved ordinances 510 and 511 updating the city's second unit regulations consistent with state law for accessory dwelling units. Ordinance 510 updated the local coastal program, or LCP, and was transmitted to the California Coastal Commission on March 19, 2024. Staff is currently working on some requested additional analysis that was requested by coastal staff. Ordinance 511 updated the Malibu Municipal Code and was sent to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, commonly known as HCD, on January 8, 2024. HCD has statutory authority to review local agencies' ADU ordinance for compliance with state ADU laws. On November 13, 2024, the city received a letter from HCD indicating revisions were needed to ensure consistency with state ADU laws. That letter was included in the Commissioner's packet as attachment two. Tonight's meeting will consider amendments to the ADU regulations in the Municipal Code only. The LCP amendments will be considered separately at a future meeting. These next few slides will provide a snapshot of some of the proposed revisions. The first is to Section 1744.040 definitions. These are mainly cleanup and fine-tuning definitions. And section, the next section is 1744.050, and that's permitted locations. This is the section of the code that has the requirement that before you can have an HC, or an ADU, you need a 20-foot-wide street requirement. Staff is in discussions with HCD about this requirement and working to identify the number of streets that are less than 20-foot wide in the street. However, we are recommending an amendment to better address HCD's comments. That is to add and read, as is shown, except as required by state law. So currently, it reads areas of adequate ingress and egress since the entire city is located within a loc, located within, actually, I will clean that up also now. Located within is twice, so we'll clean that up. In a designated very high fire hazard zone consistent with Los Angeles County Fire Department requirements to ensure adequate ingress and egress. We are suggesting, are recommending, that the words "except as required by state law" be added, and the rest of the passage is a minimum street width of 20 feet shall be required. We believe adding those words will better align us with HCD's comments. The next section is 1744.060 approvals. There are three changes, main changes. The first is to clarify the relationship between the city's LCP and the Municipal Code, indicating that the Municipal Code regulations regulate unless they're in conflict with policies in the local coastal program. The next change, proposed change, is to clarify the type and name of the permit needed. There are two classes that we're, are proposing. The first one, Class 1 Statutorily Regulated, is already in the code, but it's termed billing permit only. So we think it would, so beyond the billing permit only, the next one that's in the code is just that anything that's not billing permit only requires an APR. So we think it'll be easier to read and to understand if, if they're, we break them into two separate and distinct, Class 1 Statutorily Regulated. And these will apply to all ADUs that meet the specific size, location, and design criteria listed in state law. So these are a class of ADUs that state law lists that are exempt from any type of discretionary permit. Class 2 are locally regulated. That's essentially all other dwelling units that are not listed in state law. And they are pretty much, not always, but the locally regulated ones are the ones that the city had anticipated, and I believe I do now, but Tyler can correct me if I'm wrong, require an APR for. The staff, another recommendation is that that APR permit be changed to an administrative ADU permit, and that would be required for both Class 1 and Class 2. Currently, the APR is only required for the locally regulated. And that administrative ADU permit would be approved ministerially by the community development director. And then the next section here is just a continuation of Section 1744.060 approvals, and that is to increase the number of detached ADUs that would be allowed on lots with multifamily dwellings. And that is no more than two detached ADUs with a proposed multifamily dwelling, and up to eight detached ADUs with an existing multifamily dwelling, but can't exceed the number of primary dwelling units on a lot. So this language is right out of state law, and it is in, it falls in one of the Class 1 ADUs that would be exempt. The next section is 17.44.070 process and timing. This was mainly just to add language to be consistent with new ADU law that indicates rather than approve or deny an ADU, cities have to act upon an ADU. The next section is 1744.080 general ADU and junior ADU requirements. These requirements apply both the Class 1 and Class 2 dwelling units. The, a couple of changes that staff is recommending is to require a deed restriction for junior ADUs only. Currently, both junior and ADU, ADUs are required to record a deed restriction. On the height section, the height does not change. The height remains the same, but we are recommending removal of language on how it's measured because this is listed elsewhere in the code. Section 1744.090 is specific ADU requirements, and this would apply only to those that fall in the Class 2 or locally regulated ADUs. Again, similar to what we're recommending for the height, we are recommending that the size, it would remain the same, but we are recommending removal of the language of how it's measured, and again, because it's listed elsewhere in the code. Then the next revision, proposed revision, is to amend the language to ensure a minimum 800-square-foot ADU would be allowed. State law requires jurisdictions to allow, regardless of any other regulations, a minimum of an 800-square-foot ADU. That's 16 feet in height and four-foot side and rear setbacks. And so this language will make sure that that is clear, that that is allowed by our code. And the last proposed change is a new, is an addition of a new provision, in that we are recommending adding lot coverage requirement. State law does allow cities to add lot coverage, FAR, and open space. So the city does have a lot coverage requirement. It's known as impermeable coverage, but it's essentially the same thing, and so we are recommending that that provision be included in the ADU ordinance. And with that, staff is recommending adoption of Planning Mission Resolution 2565 with the amended language, and recommending that the City Council approve Zone Text Amendment 25003, amending the Malibu Municipal Code to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units. Staff is available for questions, and we have on the phone Todd Leishman with the BB&amp;K to answer any questions, and of course, Tyler is available for questions.
Thanks, Joyce. And I just also wanted to add, we have Todd till about 7:30, and so thank you for accommodating us moving this to the front. So if we have any questions for our special counsel, Todd Leishman, he's available till 7:30.
Okay. Great. Let's go ahead and start with disclosures. Anyone?
And Chair, we won't need to take disclosures because this is a citywide impact project.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to comments. We, yeah, we're going public comments right now. Joe Drummond?
I'm surprised I'm the only one. I just, I read this today. Sorry I was late. So it does state that ADUs must comply with all local building codes. So my question is, is it just for 800 square feet that those are all out the window, or is there a TDSF limit for ADUs above 800 square feet? And then my suggestion is heights should be limited to the height of the existing primary house if under 18 feet to a max of 16 feet. 60 days, then it should not have TDSF limits, just as setback, just setback laws as per state law. I also want to know if a water balance study should suffice rather than a percolation test for an exist, existing septic tank usage. If that's true, then adding any size ADU requires a new advanced wastewater system. And if so, the minimum size tank designed for those are 3,600 gallons, so you are encouraging more development, and increased size of regular homes are requiring such an enormous system. So please clarify this. If someone's system is working fine and not polluting the environment, any further use of low-flow fixtures, then why is upgrading to a super expensive system required? I hope this is not required for fire rebuilds. A small fraction of fire victims need to stay on their lot in order to rebuild and will not be able to do it if the governor's order is not followed, and then they can't build their ADU before their burned-out home. Also, as you know, many fire victims can't afford to upgrade their perfectly working septic system, so if they submit a water balance study indicating that flow has not increased with the use of low-flow fixtures for the rebuild and the ADU, this should be fine. And this should be considered for the ordinance in general. Otherwise, you'll have people increasing the size of their homes to compensate for the increased advanced septic system they were forced to purchase. The loss, the state law states that local codes should not apply, so I'm not sure how you'll get all these through coastal if a resident indicates these flows in the ordinance to them, unless you put it in a way where you'd want multiple ADUs to be applied for on one property, which is, which will be terrible for evacuation, fire safety, strain on septic systems, et cetera. So I just wanted to be clear that 800-square-feet ADU cannot be denied for any reason, and if so, do septic issues apply to 800-square-foot systems? Do they have to upgrade them? That's it. Thanks.
Okay. That is it. Anyone online?
There are no raised hands in the meeting, and Todd Leishman is online and available to you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and bring it up to the dials. I'm gonna, who would like to go first? Elizabeth? All right. You've got the floor.
Okay. So just for clarification purposes, can everybody hear me? I don't, you know, I don't even know if my mic's on.
Speak up.
Okay. So first of all, nobody can have an ADU in Malibu. All right? This is, the only way to have an ADU in the city of Malibu is to get through the LCP. And the only type of ADU that's allowed in our LCP is an attached ADU. Can you please join in on that, Kellen?
This is all Todd right now, so.
Okay. Todd, my friend, you want to, you want to?
Post your comments as a question to.
Okay. So Todd, can you please confirm that what I said is accurate? So the public knows and understands. There's two parts to having an ADU, okay? You cannot access this laborious process that we're going through unless you can get through the LCP. And the only way currently that you can get through the LCP is to have an attached ADU. Correct or not correct, Todd?
Is he there, Todd?
Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. In answer to the Commissioner's question, no, that's not how I would explain it. The LCP does govern in the city generally, but in the fire-impacted areas, the governor's executive order has suspended the LCP.
Correct. Correct. But that's, right.
We're going to let him finish, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. So when the LCP is in effect, or where the LCP is in effect, that's right. To go, to get approved, an ADU needs to go through the LCP. In light of recent court opinions, that would mean that an attached ADU does not need, or gets a, I don't remember if it's considered not development, or if it's de minimis development, but in any event, it doesn't have to get a CDP, as the Commissioner well knows. And, but I, it doesn't stop there because any ADU created by converting existing livable space in an already permitted primary dwelling unit, which is most AD, converted ADUs, those are also considered not development under the coastal regulations and would not need a CDP.
Right. So I just, I just want to clarify because we're going to, about to go through, and I don't think we need to, a very laborious process. There's only a very narrow window, a very narrow window in which anybody can have an ADU in this city. Now, I am so sorry for people who have emergency disasters and fire rebuilds, and they have, that is, that is an avenue. You lost your home, you get to have an ADU, and they're suspending the LCP so that you can do that. Okay? And it is my understanding that the zoning ordinance needs to comply with state law. Period. Period. So spending a lot of time trying to, you know, dance around the regulations, to me, is not, is not good time spent. So I think it's really important that the zoning ordinance is truthful and accurate and clear. And we don't want to, you know, push our public into trying to decipher a bunch of legalese that make it impossible for them to figure out what's allowed and what's not allowed. And I know that there has been a lot of emphasis on trying to make it as complicated as possible. It's not that complicated. So let's try and make it more simple and clear. That's what I would recommend. I've read the ordinance, and I want to say, for the most part, it appears to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the city is complying with state law. But then you said a lot of things like, well, let's add in lot footage, lot, you know, lot coverage restrictions. Well, that's not allowed. So let's not do that. Let's, let's, let's add in street width requirements. That's not allowed unless we have staff go to specific areas throughout the city and designate exact streets where you're going to restrict ADUs and make it public. So if you, if we want to send staff on an investigative research project to go to every single street in Canyon and Malibu and measure the roads, or use Google, or AI, and say, you know, a list of every single street that's not allowed to have ADUs, and that's what the public wants, so be it. But the truth is, is as it stands right now, it's very, very difficult unless you've already been through a very difficult situation to have an ADU in this city. Right?
So I'm going to transfer, transfer it over to Tyler because I am, I'm not familiar with the fire rebuild process and how the city is processing that. I will say that the Public Works Department maintains a list of all street, public streets, and all of the public streets are 20-foot wide. It's the private streets that staff is doing more research on.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. So the goal tonight, as you mentioned, is to get into compliance with state law. That's the ultimate goal. And our ADU ordinance tonight, we're going to go through these topics to make sure our legal has looked at it, and they feel. The local coastal program amendment to further bring our ADU laws closer to state law.
Well, that's not, that's not true. So let, let, please.
So, so, so there's a, there's a two-phase.
I know that you're passionate about that.
Yeah.
Staff needs respect.
Go ahead.
There's a, there's a two-phase process with every type of development project. You know, every project is essentially requires a CDP unless it can be exempt. And so what you were referring to is 13.4.1, which exempts attached ADUs according to that court ruling. And so, yes, if you have an attached ADU, you can then qualify for the ministerial process that we're talking about tonight. And then as, as you mentioned, and as Todd mentioned, I don't want to undersell that, you know, over a third of our city, or a third of our city geographically was affected, and they now have the benefit of this ordinance. So that's going to be, you know, in the next few years, the majority of the ADUs that come through the city are going to come through this ordinance tonight. So it's definitely a big opportunity and deal. It's not just something that we want to overlook.
Okay. But to, to your point, I just want to say, go ahead.
Yeah. If you could just get out all your questions?
Okay. So no, I just want to clarify that part of the amendment to the LCP that was submitted to the California Coastal Commission had to do with adding the word ADU into the LCP, which in fact further constrains the ability. And for example, the case that I was involved in where an attached ADU would be exempt if that amendment was to be approved, that would be no longer allowed in the city of Malibu. Because you would have to comply, you could not access the state law because side yard setbacks and TDSF would then apply. So it would in fact negate the case that I was involved in.
Everyone, okay, this, this is what I want to do. We only have another 30 minutes with the attorney.
Okay.
Was that question based to the attorney?
So.
We're going to have.
No, that was.
We're going to have a chance to do all this between us.
I want to, I want to also try to keep it focused, so you have, you make, you make a great point.
Let's focus on the ordinance.
Commissioner Riddick. LCP amendment, the LCP amendment's not in front of us, so let's, let's try not to focus on that because we're, we're focusing on the MMC tonight.
All right.
Yeah. I, so I'm going to go ahead and, does anyone have specific questions for the council?
I have a question.
Is it, because this is going to continue beyond the, when, after the legal council's done. Okay.
Well, my question is, how is this different?
So you have, you make, you make a great point.
Let's focus on the ordinance.
LCP amendment, the LCP amendment's not in front of us. So let's, let's try not to focus on that because we're, we're focusing on the MMC tonight.
Yeah. I, so I'm gonna go ahead and, does anyone have specific questions for the council?
I have a question.
Is it, because this is gonna continue beyond the, after the legal council's gonna be done.
Okay.
Well, my question is, how is this different than me wanting to add an extra room with
a little kitchenette onto my house and not have it count as TDSF? And not have it count, not have it count? And not have to follow? And I'm asking, I'm not trying to, you know, oppose you.
That would, that would be the LCP amendment that would.
Yeah, that's not this.
Okay. So it's not the same as doing that? It sounds the same.
You have to, so your, your attached kitchenette area would be, would be governed by the LCP. And if it was attached, then you would be exempt and you would be able to build it according to state law. Does that make sense?
I've got some specific questions.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Okay. First, I wanna make it, see if it's clear that in the first section, it says that you can get an ADU if you have a proposed house that's been approved. What happens if you never build it? Is your ADU go out of, go, can you, in other words, how long can you keep an ADU without a house?
But that's, that's not a question for the.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Because it's in this ordinance. It says and/or.
Are you directing that question to the attorney that's on the house?
The attorney, yes. It says, I'm looking at 1744040, and it says you need a proposed house. And then in a later section, it says it must be approved. My question is, I don't see anything in here that says it ever must be built. And that seems to be a flaw in the, in the, in the ordinance. Is that right?
Todd, you wanna take this question?
Absolutely. Chair and Commission, it has to be built. There can be no certificate of occupancy for the ADU until there's a certificate of occupancy for the primary dwelling unit.
Okay. And then the second question is, you can have one ADU and one junior ADU. Junior, junior ADU, 500 square feet, the ADU 1,000 square feet, whereas it could be 800. Is that correct?
800's a minimum, dude, that the city needs to allow, but it's up to 1,000 would be the maximum.
The city could say 800 instead of saying 1,000.
Yes.
I believe it could.
Yeah.
And as a city.
If the city, if the city said, said that, then every single one would have to be 800 square feet.
No, I understand that.
Let's ask Todd real quick.
My question is, did the city say 1,000?
We have 1,000. It's not proposed because it's already existing language from last year when we approved this thing. But Todd, what were you gonna say?
Chair and Commission, there, there are two different classes of ADUs, as has been noted. Class one is statutorily regulated, and detached ADUs under class one, statutorily regulated, can be up to 800 square feet. Beyond that, they fall into class two, locally regulated. And there, the sizes, the lowest, no, the, let me see. The lowest maximum, I wanna make sure I don't get myself tongue tied with double negatives, the lowest maximum that the city is allowed to impose are 850 and 1,000. So what, in general, on this point and in general, what you have before you in the draft MMC ordinance represents the most that the city can do.
I'm so sorry.
To regulate ADUs within the bounds of the ADU law. Just under the MMC.
Well, but that's my question. It says, it says we could have 800 for a regular ADU, and the ordinance says 1,000. So it's not the, the most, the least, the most.
It is, because the state law doesn't allow the city to set a maximum below 850 or 1,000 for class two ADUs.
Okay. I got that. Now, we got a letter from HDF explaining what we can do and what we can't do. And one of their, and they, they list some kind of ordinance, as I couldn't find, 66314 and 66322 as the two types that we can't mess with, and then all other buildings we can. Are there any other residential buildings other than those two sections?
Those sections are from state ADU law.
Right.
He's referring to.
But my question is that this HDF letter says you can't touch the state laws on those, but you can touch state laws on other stuff. And I wonder what the other stuff is.
Chair and Commission, I think I can explain that. They're saying in effect, you can't impose your local standards on class one, statutorily regulated ADUs, and they're correct. They're acknowledging that the city can impose local standards on class two, locally regulated ADUs, and that's also correct. And that's reflected in the draft before you.
Okay. And what are class two?
Class two are locally regulated ADUs.
What's that mean?
What's different about those?
What are they?
Well, for example, if they're attached, instead of converted or detached, if they're attached, they're class two, locally regulated. If they are detached, that are bigger than 800 square feet, they are class two, locally regulated.
So maybe I can say it another way. If, if your ADU is exempt from the LCP, then it is statutorily regulated. Would that be correct, Todd?
Partially, Commissioner, but in, in fact, every ADU, when the, when and where the LCP applies, every ADU passes through the LCP. And if it's approved with a CDP, it's approved. That's the end of the process. If it is exempt, if it doesn't need a CDP, then it, then it's treated under the ordinance. And under the ordinance, the MMC ordinance. Under the MMC, there are two classes of ADUs. Class one is statutorily regulated. Those are the most privileged under state law because they're only subject to the very few standards that are in the statute itself, in the state law itself. If, if an ADU that didn't need a CDP doesn't qualify under those very, for stat, class one, because it doesn't satisfy those very few statutorily limited ones, or, or, or statutorily regulated ones, then it, it is treated as a class two. And it, and if it satisfies the additional standards that are local, local objective standards, then it can be approved as well. So it's, it's really three buckets, Commissioner. It's LCP, but if it doesn't, if it's not dealt with, with a CDP, then it goes to the MMC, and there it either qualifies for that more privileged class one, statutorily regulated, or if not, then it's treated as class two, locally regulated.
Yeah. And just to let you all know, it is listed in our, we have all the lists right here in chapter, it would be section 1744060, and it lists all the types that qualify as a class one ADU permit. And then all the ones, it would be section B, that qualify as the locally regulated class two.
Which, where is that?
So it's on page nine of 24 of your report.
1744060.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have, we have class one is converted on a single-family lot, limited.
Wait, wait. Can we find where?
1744.060.
Yep. Under approvals.
Approved.
You're talking the red line section?
In the red lines, yes. Thank you. We have converted on a single-family lot, limited detached on a, on a lot with single-family, converted on a lot with multi-family, limited detached on a multi-family, and then there's, there's specifics about what is considered limited detached on a multi-family. And those are all under the class one, statutorily regulated.
When does it become a guest house? Or can you have a guest house or three guest houses and ADUs?
Only one guest house, and by definition, the guest house does not have a kitchen.
Yeah. I have a question or two. In regards to TDSF for class one and class two, do they apply?
As it currently stands, TDSF applies in the LCP. It does not apply in this MMC ordinance. Meaning, like, if you meet the exemptions of the LCP.
If you're doing an attached ADU, TDSF does not apply.
If it, if it's exempt from the LCP.
What about ESHA?
ESHA would still apply somewhat, depends on where you were geographically, but there are regulations around that, too.
State law supersedes?
It has to be within this ordinance. So we have things in here, like lot coverage is why we added that, and other things, setbacks and what have you.
Tyler, maybe I can help with that, too.
So are ADUs gonna become the new, like, basement?
No.
No.
If it doesn't count towards TDSF?
Well.
No, it counts.
In the way it's interpreted, yes.
It counts as TDSF. You just can't exceed it. You can't, you can't exceed.
No, no, John, no, it doesn't count towards TDSF. You could, you could go over your TDSF if you're building.
You could go over it, but it's still counted.
So if a project is exempt from the LCP and qualifies under this ordinance, 1744, TDSF is not one of the limiting factors to get an ADU.
Okay. And what, and one question that Joe Drummond brought up in regards to septic. So an operating permit would not qualify to get an APR for this?
And Todd, feel free to weigh in here, but as I understand it, basically, we cannot prohibit an ADU for that reason. The, the OWTS would be on a separate track, and it would have to meet all the regulations of building code and what have you to qualify, and may qualify, may need its own CDP for that, but the ADU would be on a separate track.
So the ADU would be, you could have the ADU completed, but have an obligation to upgrade your septic in the future or something, or?
Everything still needs to meet the building code. I think it was also one of Joe Drummond's responses. So the ADU maybe could not be built until you figured it out with the, with the OWTS. But the OWTS would be on its own track, its own CDP, and if, if the ADU itself qualified for exemption.
Let's, for conversation's sake, let's not talk about fire rebuilds because they have six different levels of governor exemptions. So let's just talk about the average Joe.
Even if it wasn't fire rebuild, yes.
No, I'm saying, let's not, let's, fire rebuild.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So this is just citywide.
Okay.
If your ADU qualifies for an exemption, you are under a separate track. You're under this ministerial approval, under this ordinance. Now, the OWTS might still need a CDP. It might still need all, meet all the regulations of the LCP. That would be processed separately as its own application.
One, one more question. Will periphery structures count as exist, attached structures? If you have, you have periphery structures, let's say you have.
So you have a pool house.
A pool house, and you wanted to attach your ADU to that pool house, would that be?
No.
So it's a detached, ultimately a detached ADU, correct?
No, it'd be, it would be attached to a periphery structure that's already exist.
But the pool house is not attached to the main home.
No.
Correct?
It's not a primary.
So that would, that would be considered a detached ADU, but it's not attached to the primary residence, and therefore, in most cases, we're talking non-fire rebuild, right? Would qualify as a CDP, would, would need a CDP.
Okay.
True.
Yeah. John?
On, on page four of the red line, 4C, talks about multifamily residences. And it says you can have the same number of ADUs as the residences. So, and then it says.
Okay. We got 20 minutes with the.
Well, I know, but it, I wanted to do a specific case. There's a certain motel in town that had, that's trying to, was our multifamily structure that had nine units in it.
Mm-hmm.
And it says you can add nine more. Okay. Is that correct? Because that's the way I read it. So all of a sudden, you got 18 units on, on one piece of property, 9,000 square feet. Is that possible? Is that right?
Todd, do you wanna take that one?
Absolutely. Chair and Commission, the, the provision to which the commissioner refers is new to the law. It's a result of a recent amendment. And what it means is when there is an existing, not a proposed, but an existing multifamily dwelling structure on the property, the owner has a right under class one to build eighty, detached ADUs, and that means detached with reference to the primary dwelling structure. Detached ADUs up to a number equal to the eight, or the, the number of primary dwelling units in the multifamily structure, whichever is less. So in your example, where there are nine units in the apartment complex, they don't get nine ADUs. They don't have a right to that. They have a right to up to eight, or the number of primary dwelling units, whichever is less.
So you get.
And they all have to be detached from the multifamily dwelling structure. It can be attached to each other. But yeah, they can have 18 units on a lot that today has a nine-unit apartment complex.
If it was legal for nine?
Yeah, well, in this particular case.
If it was legal for nine. Yeah, it has, the, the assumption here is that it was a legally established multifamily structure.
Yeah. So, so you, a 9,000-square-foot lot could have 16 units on it. In this particular case.
Seventeen. Yeah.
Seventeen, yeah. And then if they had a basement, you could add more, correct?
John, this is, Skylar's been really.
So just along the same lines, counsel, that John is asking a question about, you know, we, Joe had brought up the septic issue, Drew had commented on it. How would that work with their waste system? Would the waste system not come in to some element of requirement that they would have to prove that that works?
Building code.
Well, I, so my question, is the building code gonna capture that? I just, I just have trouble in my mind with how septic systems work in Malibu, going and saying that, you know, I just think people need to understand that there's, you know, that that's part of the regulation that's going on.
That particular property doesn't have a height limit also.
Yeah, it's on the beach.
So.
Yeah, but, but the answer, as I understood it, is no matter what, under septic system, you have to meet the building code. Correct?
Yeah.
Let's, let's, I, we're asking questions, and let's let them answer.
Yeah, that's correct. Todd, do you have anything else to add about the processing of the OWTS permit?
No.
Okay. I've got a.
I have one other question. What about an ADU made as a second story as long as you're under 18-foot?
So, so is it attached?
It's attached.
So it qualifies for this ordinance?
So it'd be, but it would, it'd be, and what happens if you're going over 18?
This ordinance actually allows you to go up to 25, I believe.
But it counts as square footage if you slide in the second floor, correct? Living area? In other words, you got, you got an 1,000-square-foot, 25-foot-high building, you can't throw a second floor in, then you have 2,000 square feet.
No, no. You can't go three stories.
No, two.
And I guess, Tyler, would the two-thirds rule apply if it was non-beachfront?
So if it's, if it's attached, it could go up to 25 feet. If it's detached, it could go up to 18 feet.
Unless the house is 22 feet.
And there's no limitation on two-thirds.
I.
But where this would only kind of apply for a large, large part is beachfront for the 25 attached, and that is, well, 25, but the, up to 24, 28 with a pitch would be allowed by right. So there would be no site plan review for that.
It regards to, if ESHA and all those type of things, I categorize as ESHA, there's so many subcategories, like under canopy, all these type of things. How's that all gonna work? From, let's say you have an oak tree or whatever is for an ADU.
That's LCP.
That's LCP?
There are a limited environmentally sensitive habitat area regulations in the municipal code, but they're limited. It's not as comprehensive as the LCP. So there's, there's not a lot of anything related to native protected trees that I can recall in the MMC.
But I thought the LCP is below.
We're not doing the LCP.
Statutory control. Isn't the LCP below the statutory control? So the LCP wouldn't, wouldn't trump that? Or, or would it?
If it's a, so going back to kind of just the two categories, if it's a detached ADU, the LCP applies and all the regulations of ESHA.
Attached or detached?
Detached.
Detached.
All the regulations then of ESHA, native tree protection, you know, all the LCP chapters would apply. If you are exempt from the LCP or in the terms of the fire rebuilds, just this ordinance applies, and nothing outside of this ordinance can further limit an ADU.
And then what's at our discretion here that we're voting on? Like, like, what, what is, what are the things that we're saying yes to or no to?
The whole ordinance?
Everything in red, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me make one, excuse me, note. This is a recommendation to council, so they will make the ultimate decision. And then second, right now, the state considers this AD ordinance in the city non-compliant, so there is not one that we can use on ADUs right now. So we are, we fall back to state law. So we are, we fall back to state law, which is very open on ADUs. And so part of bringing this forward is to get something that is good. You may not think it's great, but good. So we have some local rules in place, because state law obviously doesn't always work. So that's where we're at.
So the attached ADU gray area that we're in right now, that will stay in effect until we have a fully ratified ADU ordinance.
Well, that will stay in effect until the Coastal Commission makes a determination on the LCP amendment.
Question.
Correct, but we have about 14 minutes with Todd to focus those questions with Todd right now.
Good.
We have in here a width requirement on the road. What I was wondering is, a while back, the county did their ADU law, and they put in a requirement that you needed two exits to a highway, because they didn't want to kill people, which happened in the last fire. And that apparently was approved. So can we, can we, since the county got it, can't we get it?
So the county just recently revised their ordinance, and they still have that provision of two means of access. And they are doing, similar to what the city is proposing, where they are exempting the ones that are Class 1. So Class 1 would not be subject to the two means of access.
And Class 1 is the junior?
The, Class 1 is the ones that are listed specifically in state law.
So.
And yes, that's the junior.
So, okay, so if I, if we suggested to council that they use the county language, we can do that, since it's already been accepted?
The, I spoke to one of the county planner that was working on it, and he says that they are, while they sent a draft to HCD, they did not receive comments back from HCD, and that once the ordinance was adopted, which I think was just a few weeks ago, it would be sent up to HCD. So HCD has not approved that language.
But their original one was approved about two years ago, right?
And no, it was not approved. It was similar to the city getting a letter. They also got a letter, and that's why they just recently are making the changes.
Okay, so.
Right, so it was approved by the. John, because you just stepped on a point. I just want to add a question to one of the things you just brought up. Okay, so Type 1, for example, you're doing a normal permit. You have to go fire department, well-serve, all those things. For a Type 1, you're not going to have to do that? Because we're making fire code in regards to ingress and egress when there would be normally being the fire department that would be doing that? Is that, I tried to phrase this as a question.
It's my understanding that you have to completely comply with building code. Todd, do you want to try to answer that or weigh in on that?
Sure, Chair and Commissioners, that's accurate. Every ADU, whether under the LCP or under the MMC, and it's a Class 1 or a Class 2, every ADU must comply with the city's building standards.
So the fire, you would have to have fire department approval and water approval to, for an APR?
Yeah, but what I'm.
Yes, if they're the approving authority over building standards on that topic, yes.
So why in the world are we making code in regards to the width of the roads when it's the fire department's jurisdiction to do that?
Well, I can tell you the answer to that. They approve everything. Did they go up to Big Rock? Did they go up any of the other canyons? No.
They don't approve everything, John. I mean, I just, they don't.
Look at Dina and Mike Morris.
There has never been a taking in Malibu that I know of.
Well.
Let's stick to questions where.
Well, my question is very direct. Can we recommend to the council that they use the county language and?
I will answer that directly. You can recommend whatever you want. It is not what you should do, because the state is going to deny our ADU.
The state is considering the county already.
The county did the way you want it. They were told by the state, no, and so they're revising it. That's exactly what she said.
That's what she just said.
Did you say they said no, Joyce?
Yes, and so they are revising it. But how they're revising it is that they're keeping the two means of access only for the Class 2 locally regulated, but that has not been approved by HCD.
And they're applying for it. We can always backtrack. But I don't want to kill a bunch of people.
We're in a, Commissioner, real quick.
Commissioner Maz, I will say that, you know, we've been, we've been at this ordinance for a while, and there was, we had a long discussion about the two means of access, and that was abandoned for the 20-foot wide. And that is because when we did maps of all the streets in the city that has two means of access, there were very few, because of all the canyon roads that the city has. They're usually one way in and one way out. And so a significant portion of the city would have been impacted. And so the city chose the 20-foot wide.
So, I mean, did the city, my question is, did the city choose it, or did staff choose it? I, the last fire killed, what, four people because of that?
John, John?
Okay.
Chair, if I could, if I could just add some clarification points, real quick. So to Joyce's point, the language that the county adopted was similar to us, approved by their council and then not certified by the HCD. That's the same boat we're in. Now, the 20-foot wide egress has been approved by our council on two occasions. First, when we came, last year, when we brought this ordinance to them. And then again, we, if you guys recall, this commission, I believe, recommended maybe we take it out and the council, for the fire rebuild amendment to march. And the council decided to keep it in again. So on two separate occasions, the council has decided to keep the 20-foot egress. So our staff recommendation, no, we have no recommendation. We didn't change any, any language that's existing.
Okay, however, as I understand it, HCD still has an issue with the, with the language that we have in there regarding a 20-foot wide road, which is already covered under the fire department's jurisdiction to provide fire safety in terms of road width. So we don't need, if we want to have a compliant ordinance, we don't necessarily need to put that language in there, because it's a roadblock to having an approved ordinance. Would that be correct?
Maybe. We don't know what HCD is going to do. But what Joyce pointed out is an amendment to these amendments here. I don't know if we can pull that up, because we've added a minimum street width of 20 feet, except as required by state law. And so what we're trying to do there is say, we will keep 20 feet where we can. But if the state law on the state law-required ADU says we can't do that, then state law controls on that.
Can I ask you a question on that? This, this letter we got from HDF, whoever they are, they seem to know what they're doing.
This.
They say we can't do it.
That change that we read into, that I just read, is directly in response to that letter.
Okay.
Well, it says right in this letter, you can't do it.
The change that he added makes, agrees with that.
Okay, so let's move on, so let's move on from that for a second. So I'm just curious, where did the additional restriction of lot coverage come in?
That was a, that is a staff recommendation.
Because?
Well, the, the, this, a lot of constituents in the city have, you know, wanted TDSF limits or wanted impermeable coverage limits. And at first, we did not believe that the state law allowed that. The state law does allow that, so it is an option we wanted to bring to your attention. You guys could vote to say no.
How does that?
We wanted to bring it to your attention that it's an option for the city to consider.
How does that work in terms of, you know, you, I don't really, you have a lot coverage requirement, but you don't have a setback requirement or a TDS requirement when the project is exempt? So how does lot coverage come into play there? Or does it only come into play on the locally regulated group of ADUs?
Chair and Commissioner, I think I can help with that.
Okay.
As the Commissioner just stated, it only comes into play on locally regulated.
Okay.
Well, I, let me qualify that. It comes, the LCP has whatever it has, right? But when we're, when it's outside the LCP and it's under the MMC, lot coverage and those kind of things would only apply to locally regulated. Because again, that first class is statutorily regulated. It's only subject to the enumerated standards in the statute.
Okay, so Todd, while we have you, I would like to just propose some clarification language that I would like to, to get hopefully consensus on, because I think it's really important that when we have language in these types of ordinances, that we, we want to make sure that they're truthful, you know, factual, all the way around. And the sentence at the end of the first paragraph of 17.44.060 states, "The provisions of this chapter apply when not in conflict with the city's LCP." So I think that's, that's a little confusing, because there are things that apply even if they are not totally in sync with the LCP. And I would propose, I would propose the following language. And Todd, you can, you can give me your take on this. "The following approvals apply to ADUs and JADUs developed under this chapter. Because the city of Malibu lies entirely within the coastal zone, ADU applications may be subject to the requirements in the local coastal program in addition to other provisions of this chapter. If an ADU application is exempt from the need to obtain a coastal development permit, then only this chapter governs."
So you're adding the word "may"?
Well, yes, and clarification on what applies and what doesn't.
Todd?
Chair and Commissioner, I followed that as best I could without having it written in front of me. I couldn't say for certain, but I think it gets to the same place as the language that's in the draft and would work fine.
Okay. So.
So we get at it then.
So on that, so are we, so I, you know, and overall, I just want to say, overall, we are complying with state law. I mean, we are. So I would definitely add that in. And in my opinion, it's really going to come down to the LCP as to whether, you know, there's some sliver of a way to have, you know, ADUs in Malibu without going through the pain of a disaster rebuild. So, you know, that's.
Now, let me, let me ask a question to Tyler.
So, because that was a significant amendment, do we want to straw vote that one? And make sure we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, want to read it one more time for Rebecca, please?
Show us where it is.
Actually, if you have that written down, are you, is it something you could pass over?
Yes.
Can you tell us what, what?
We can read it again.
Where?
No, Elizabeth drafted that.
Yeah, but there's a section that goes into.
It's the beginning of 1744.060.
It's the last sentence of the first paragraph.
1744 what? Okay. Okay, so right where the red line starts?
You mean, which, which section?
Elizabeth, will you read what you proposed again for everybody?
I'm going to read it again.
Thank you.
Okay. "The following approvals, oops, sorry about that. I just lost it." Okay. "The following approvals apply to ADUs and JADUs developed under this chapter. Because the city of Malibu lies entirely within the coastal zone, ADU applications may be subject to the requirements in the local coastal program in addition to the provisions of this chapter. If an ADU application is exempt from the need to obtain a coastal development permit, then only this chapter governs."
Can we say this chapter shall apply instead of governs?
I think it's.
I think it's fine. Wait, it's right.
Let me answer.
Chair and Commissioner, having heard it a second time, again, I think it, it works. It gets to the same places.
Okay.
That was the intent of the language drafted in front of you. And certainly that last phrase about if a CDP is not required, only this chapter applies. That's accurate.
Okay, Tyler, question.
So we did a straw vote on that? We're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, that's in?
Okay, I'll give it to Rebecca, just a second.
Let me ask this question. How long does the fire, let me read it in a second. How long does the fire exemption last?
The, you're talking about the.
Well, the thing that takes.
The governor's order, right?
Governor's order.
It's, it's, I don't recall any, any exemption. I could double-check for you, but I don't recall any expiration.
Thirty years from now, it's probably, it's not going to be in effect. Your house burns down, falls down 30 years from now.
Perhaps Kellen or.
Kellen?
Or Todd can weigh in as legal. But if there's no expiration in a governor's order, is there a de facto expiration?
I think it automatically expires in three years or something like that?
Well, the old one did, but I don't know about the new one. That's why I'm asking.
I was helping here. The question, how long does his emergency order last?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know the expiration date, but he can continue to re-up.
I will look that up, but he can continue to re-up them. That's what typically happens, is they have to, just like city council here has to ratify them every so often. That's generally what we've seen with the governor's orders. I'll look at the length in state law on when it expires.
But he's termed out in a year, so.
The replacement will.
This is not permanent stuff.
Generally, that is a correct statement, yes.
I, I have not been keeping track. I have a quick question, Tyler, in regards to the Palisades fire. Is this, what's happening with, like, La Costa, beachfront, and Big Rock in regards to level of safety and all that type of thing?
And for this? In what?
Are ADUs going to be allowed to be added to areas where they were building moratoriums previously, or?
It depends. So there are ways that an ADU can be added. You're talking about basically for the landslide areas, right? Where there's a geo-hazard area, yeah. You just have to get creative with how it's designed. It's based on the fixture units for building code.
So you might, you might have to pull fixtures from somewhere else on the, on the home?
Correct, yeah.
And this is retroactive for Woolsey also, and future fires?
No, it's not.
And so Woolsey wouldn't get the benefit of the governor's order?
Woolsey, okay.
So, so whereas the governor's order, going back to the attached versus detached, in all of the city, detached falls under the LCP and attached is exempt, right?
Okay.
For the fire area, Palisades fire area, and now Franklin fire area, because they fall under the governor's order, both detached and attached are exempt or suspended, to use a correct term.
Okay.
So Woolsey is not part of that. So if it's a detached ADU new, it would be, it would still require a coastal development permit.
Question, Tyler. Joe asked about heights, basically, being, these ADUs being higher than the house, existing house. Obviously, that seems like a view issue. Is that something we can put in there, or is that just state law and we can't touch it?
I believe the.
Twenty-five feet seems pretty high.
Is 16 feet, Joyce, or Todd? The minimum is 16, right?
Chair and Council, the height limits in the draft are the most that you can do.
Okay, so what happens to our PVD and all that?
The, the height limits in the draft are the only thing you can do for height when it comes to ADUs under the MMC.
Are there any effects of the, an existing primary view ordinance would have on the placement of this or that height?
No, the, everything else, nothing else exists.
Okay.
For an ADU under the MMC.
Okay, so.
And with that, unless you have a final question for me, I'm going to have to.
I think that's it. I think that's it. Thank you, Todd. Yeah, thank you so much. Our height allowance in the ADU ordinance is 18 feet for detached, up to 25 feet attached.
But you can put it on top of something.
No, that's counted. The 25 feet is because it's a second.
If you have a current house that does not have a second story, you could essentially, without a site plan review or anything, now have a 25-foot structure, correct? Just putting it in layman's terms.
As long as it's a junior ADU.
As long as it's a junior ADU. And could you, could an attached?
Did he sign off?
He did. Could an attached ADU, Tyler or Joyce, be something that's like connected to the house with a breezeway?
No, they give you 150 feet in here to do it.
Yes, I, I'm just looking for this section.
I think, I think there's a section that says 150.
We addressed the breezeway, I believe.
Sure. Commissioner, it has to be enclosed space. Sure. Commissioner, it has to be enclosed space in order to be considered attached.
Got it.
So reading this height again, and Joyce, if you want to follow GA, so for the twenty-five feet, the ones that are attached, an ADU that is attached to the primary dwelling may not exceed twenty-five feet in height or the height limitation imposed by the underlying zone that applies to the primary dwelling, whichever is lower. So on beachfront-
Is a primary view, though, imposed by a zone or no? No?
No, that's a separate thing outside this ordinance. So what this is saying is on beachfront, as I was kind of mentioning earlier, you may be up to, you may be able to maximize the twenty-five feet because that's allowed by right. On non-beachfront, you still may be restricted to eighteen feet.
Okay, now, if you, if you didn't like your neighbor, can you, can you just, there's no requirement where you put your ADU, can you put it right in front of his view, even though you have ten acres or something?
As we know, an eighteen-foot development is not protected under the primary view rules anyway. So if the structure is eighteen feet or less, there's no private view protections.
No, but you have site plan, I guess you don't.
This exceeds everything.
So don't piss off your neighbor. Yeah?
It's under eighteen foot anyways. All right, so we got one item down. Does anyone have any more recommendations to-
I mean, I would just like to propose a discussion and really, I mean, with, I, I would, Joyce, so if, if we were to have this be, you know, basically how it is with the red lines and take out the requirement to do the twenty-foot wide road, which we know is already covered by fire, would this pass muster with HCD or no?
Yes. So HCD, their current letter asks the city to remove that provision.
Correct.
And so that's why the language was added to indicate that it would, it's, it's only required-
Right, it's whether the county wins or, you know, loses or whatever.
Right.
It's based, will be predicated on that.
Right. It, it, it allows, it allows the city an opportunity to add back in or to clarify if it's not, if it's, if, if it is determined that it is not inconsistent with state law.
And, and I, just as a matter of fact, I'd probably be outvoted on this. I would strenuously object to not having it in there.
To not what?
To not having the twenty-foot in there. We don't want to kill people.
No, no, no. We're saying we're going to leave it in with, with the language that will allow us to have it in if LA County wins with the state or have it out if LA County doesn't win.
Yeah, and I'd like to do the same thing with the two ways in and two ways out.
We, that's already, that's already, that's already, that train left the station.
I, I don't think so.
Yes, it did.
It, it did.
Council and staff already removed it.
I have a question too.
But the state did not remove it from the county. It's still under consideration.
Is that true?
If the county gets it, we should get it.
Is that true, Joyce? I'm, I'm, I got lost.
So for the county ADU ordinance, they just recently adopted a new ordinance in which they have the two means of access in only for the class-two ADUs. The class-ones, which are exempt, are also exempt from the two means of access. So it only applied to what the city is calling class-two, locally regulated. However, it has not been approved by HCD. It is being sent to HCD for HCD's review.
Here's a copy of the, it's a copy of the language if you want to read it. And it's-
My recommendation is we don't build our codes on what the county is doing while they're waiting for review from a state that, agency that we don't know how they're going to respond. So vote what you want to have. Don't build it based on LA County.
That's what I want to have.
I, I understand. I'm just saying the letter, I think, is not where to go. Just, you all should just pick what you want.
I'm going to say the reason-
I'll put something for straw vote and we'll vote on it, John.
The reason, I'm going to say, the reason why we, we, that train left the station is because there's not, there's so many streets that wouldn't provide that. It would just, it negates the whole idea of ADUs in its entirety, pretty much. That's why, that's why the train left the station.
And this train then left the station in Malibu when we built eighteen-foot wide roads.
We got, we got it. So go ahead and make, make the motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we attempt-
Okay, a straw, we're doing a straw vote.
Straw vote that we attempt to do the language. And if you want me to read it, I'll read it. But it basically says two ways in, two ways out. And it was, as I remember, approved on their first round about four years ago.
Okay.
And I don't know how, why they changed it, if they changed it. But the language I got from that document, and I can read it to you, well, it's, it's two ways in and two ways out. And we are in a city, yes, we have a lot of dead-end streets. And yes, we have a lot of twenty-foot wide roads or twelve-foot wide roads in the case of-
Okay, we, we, we got it. So what do you, what do you guys?
My straw vote is to recommend to the city council-
Okay.
That they try to get this.
We got it.
So you support that? I don't necessarily support that. Marnie?
I support that.
You support it?
I support that.
Drew?
I don't support it.
I don't support it.
Okay, so then it wouldn't go in there.
Okay. Next.
Joyce, do you feel, you feel like relatively confident in the way, like with our discussion and how it's proposed right now that they're going to approve it? Because I think, at the end of the day, the idea for us, guys, is to like not sit in this like gray area, anything goes zone for any longer than we need to.
So with HCD, it is, it is often hard to say what they're going to require. However, staff is in discussions with HCD. They've had, at least, and Tyler can talk to that, they've had at least one phone call from HCD. And I, I don't recall, Tyler, did we send up this draft ordinance to HCD? If not, we, we would immediately do this, so.
Yeah, before, before we go to council, our, we wanted a refined version with you, with you all. And then we're going to keep our discussions going with HCD. But we are confident that it will get approved. They're giving us, you know, back and forth about the twenty-foot wide, but there's, there is room to, to, to work with them.
But you think that you've mitigated the, you've mitigated the road width issue with the language that Joyce has crafted?
Correct.
Or you guys have worked on?
Right.
Okay.
Just very, very briefly, we wouldn't have brought this to you if we didn't think it would pass muster. So that's one thing. Two, we haven't presented that new change that we added just moments ago. So I think that strengthens our hand with HCD. And three, as noted, we can't speak for HCD. They're, they're a tricky beast, but we're doing our best with them. And so we feel as comfortable as we can be not being in their heads.
I, so like Skylar said, that we're in this gray area where anything goes. Are we in a gray area where anything goes? It seems like we're, we're in a nothing goes.
No, no, there's a, there's a Supreme Court ruling, California Supreme Court ruling that we're operating under for attached ADUs.
Well, right, not a, basically-
Well, because I, the other question is, isn't this new thing basically everything goes? And you have this brand-new loophole that says-
No.
No, it's not.
Is it not? Because I want to understand this and maybe some-
Nothing is, nothing's going to happen.
Give me some examples of how this looks now versus how it's going to look when this is passed. What, what's the difference of if I'm a person and I want to add an ADU to my house or some rooms to my house with a little kitchenette?
If it's attached to your house, then you, you can do it.
As of now, I can.
Yes.
And then after this is passed, you still can.
You still will be able to.
So what changes?
Well, really, what it gives us is a real ordinance. That's what it gives us. Malibu will have an ordinance, a zoning ordinance for ADUs, which will make us compliant with the requirements of the state. Is that correct or incorrect?
So, yes, just, just as a point of clarification to that question, so the HCD did not approve the ordinance that is in the books now. So that is the letter, the letter that we got from HCD was in response to the ordinance we, we had, the council adopted.
So right now, if I wanted to add a little wing to my house that's about a thousand square feet, I can't do it. But once this passes, I can do it and I don't need really permission? Or is this, is that wrong?
No, you, you can, you can do, you can do it.
But I need less approval?
Marty, you're, you're in the fire zone. You're different than other people.
No, but assuming I wasn't.
If you weren't, you weren't, you're the LCP.
The gray area right now is cities pass ADU ordinances, but they are not enforceable until HCD says yes, they are good to go. And so at this moment, we have passed it through the city council. We've sent it to HCD and they said no. So we cannot enforce on our HCD or on our ADU ordinance, even though it's on our books, until they say yes. And so what we're trying to do tonight is get to the yes from HCD so that-
And if I could, real quick, too, the, this is, has been crafted to fit Malibu. Whereas if we don't have this on the books, then we're just subject to whatever the state require, the state allows. So-
And when I said I, I don't mean me in my house. I meant like, I was in Malibu.
Things we mentioned tonight about eighteen-feet height and things, those are, those are related to Malibu, right? And so if not, then we default to the state, which could be more allowable or-
So essentially, somebody could come in right now and be like, hey, I want to build a thirty-five-foot-tall ADU. And the city would have to say, okay. Because we don't have an ADU ordinance that's compliant.
No, no, but you would have to go by state ordinance.
Yes, John is right. There's-
You could not go to thirty-five feet.
It falls back to state law, but state law is generally more permissible than the things that we're discussing tonight.
The one thing that I should point out, that the reason why, Marty, the reason why this is really important is most, if not all, ADUs are short-term rentals. This makes them long-term rentals. It's a big deal. Okay? You can't, you don't have to have a party next door to you every weekend. Okay? But we can't do that now. This law says thirty-one days you can rent for. That's a big deal. And we can't do it because we don't have a law.
Basically, projects that are not attached ADUs or are not part of the disaster are most likely just sitting in limbo land on someone's desk right now.
And even after this passes-
Yeah.
It's not going to help a lot of people in the fire burn because they got to get a house first. They have to have a certificate of occupancy. So-
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve this as we've discussed.
Continue a little bit more discussion. Go ahead.
Do I have a second?
I mean, I, I don't have anything else. I would, I would say yes.
So we got a first and a second? Should we continue discussion? Are we good?
Unless you have anything. I don't have anything.
I don't? I think I got it. I mean, maybe it'd be great, I still don't grasp what is considered one or a two, a type one and a type two.
So what?
So a type, a type one, it's very simply, even though, you know, Todd, you know, said whatever, just think of it as type one are ADUs which are currently exempt from getting a CDP. Okay? They're exempt. They're class one. They are going-
What are the?
There's only one, there's only, there's only one.
So, Carolyn, those are the ones that are actually listed. So there are types of ADUs that are listed in statute, and those are all listed in the code. And that is-
Read them. Can you read them?
Yeah. It's a couple of pages long, but let me get to that place. Look at seventeen forty-four point oh six oh approvals. Tyler, is the Commissioner's packet's got page numbers on it?
They do not.
No? Okay. So it's seventeen forty-four point oh six oh approvals. And then if you look at A, A is, lists four types. And that are the four types that are class one. So the first one is converted on a, on a lot with a single family. And then it lists the requirements or the regulations for a single family. And keep in mind that this language, as you will note, generally did not change from your existing ordinance.
Yep.
These are not new. This, this revision changes the name of what we're calling them, but they pretty much have always been in the code. And then number two is limited detached on a single family.
Real quick before we move on, just want to explain, A1 is just conversions of space in your primary dwelling. So that's what A1 covers.
So, okay.
So if you-
The example would be taking your garage and making it a livable space.
As long as-
Can you do that without creating another four hundred square foot garage?
So it depends, yes, yes.
Okay, so you can convert your garage to a JADU or ADU and not create another four hundred square foot garage. Is that correct?
That is correct. I, I mean-
Let me just double check because there is some language about replacement parking. So I just want to make sure there-
They say you can park outside. You have to have two parks.
So that, that is true because the parking requirement is under specific ADU requirements. And those only apply to class two.
Got it. Okay.
So these that we're reviewing right now-
Park conversion.
Right.
Parking is only required, one, one off-street enclosed or unenclosed space is required for each ADU. And then there's some exemptions there, but they apply only to the class two.
Well, it wouldn't be a garage anymore. It would be an ADU.
No, but you'd be able to put a bathroom, a shower, a kitchen.
And a kitchen, yes.
Just, just for reference sake, maybe Tyler, if you can verify.
I'm sorry.
So basically, a class one is not much different than doing a less than fifty percent interior remodel in a way. It's still an APR, right?
It's not an APR. It's a, it's now, if you guys approve this tonight, it would be an ADU permit. It's an administrative permit, but it's not, it is not much different. And I believe-
So I, instead of people coming in for doing a remodel, they just say, hey, this is, call it an ADU.
But just, just remember, you, you can't do it. What I'm trying to say is, say you come to, or maybe you can. Let me ask, let me ask a question.
You need a separate entrance.
If I come, if I came into planning and I said I want to convert my four hundred square foot garage into an ADU, can I do that? You would say?
Yes, because the replacement parking is not required, is not required to be replaced. And that's in, that's in the code here, seventeen forty-four oh nine oh F.
You'd have to make it five hundred feet.
Okay, so we don't have to get through the, we've gotten through the LCP. That's an exempt project.
Correct.
Okay, good. Next. What's the next one?
No, but Tyler, wouldn't you have to make it five hundred feet?
So that's an attached-
You can't have a four hundred foot ADU.
It's an attached ADU. It would be considered an attached ADU because we're talking about an attached garage.
What if it's not attached?
If it's not attached, then you fall, and this is not Palisades Fire, correct?
Right.
Then, then it would be a detached ADU and you would not be exempt from a coastal development permit.
Okay, so then-
So in that case, yes, replacement parking would be required.
Wouldn't you have to make it a hundred feet bigger? Most garages are four hundred and they have to have five hundred.
Five hundred is, no, there's, there's-
JADU.
JADU's minimum is five hundred, isn't it?
No, it's two.
That's the size of an ADU. Yes, that's the size of the ADU, not the parking.
What's the next one that's, what's the next one that's allowed?
In class one.
So the number two, so as Tyler indicated, number one, so there's four. And so the first two relate to single family and then the next two for multifamily. And I just lost, so number two is limited detached on a single family. And that's one detached new construction ADU on a lot with a proposed or existing single-family dwelling in addition to any JADU that might otherwise be established on the lot.
What is that? So, so-
So if you meet this following criteria and it's detached on a single-family lot, you basically comply. The side or rear yard setbacks are at least four feet. The total floor area is eight hundred square feet or smaller. The peak height above grade does not exceed the applicable height limit in the, in subsection seventeen forty-four oh eight oh below, which goes into height.
If you wanted, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if you wanted to do a thousand square foot, for instance, then you would fall out of the exempt category.
That would put you into the class two.
So you'd have to do, you can do a detached ADU that's less than how much?
Eight hundred or less.
Eight hundred or less, you can do a detached ADU. And I come to planning and I say, hey, I want to build a six hundred square foot ADU in my backyard. I'm going to be over my TDSF and, and I'm going to, I'm not going to have my twenty-five foot cumulative setback. Is that okay? You would say?
You're not in the fire zone, correct?
All of Malibu is.
So we're talking about western Malibu?
Okay, yeah.
I would say you're not exempt from a coastal development permit.
Western Malibu is not exempt.
Any detached is, any detached is not exempt.
No, everywhere in Malibu.
Does the five-foot fire setback, is that, is that a code?
Yeah, that's fire.
So you'd have to be five feet instead of four feet.
Well, four feet is the minimum here. And if, for whatever reason, the fire department allowed it, like on beachfront lots, sometimes they allow lesser setbacks. But generally, five feet is required.
So wait, I really, I really want to understand this. Me and Marnie really want to understand this. Okay, so I come to you and I say, I want to build an ADU. It's less than 500 square feet, it's going to be in my backyard. It's detached. You say, you can build it, Liz, if.
You get a coastal development permit.
Okay, which means that you can't do it because you have to comply with TDSF, side yard setbacks, cumulative square footage, you cannot do it.
No, no.
Just to be clear.
As is now or as is.
If you're very rich and you have a big enough lot and you've got sprawling land, you can do it. But you, but I can't do it and you can't do it. And you probably can't do it. And John, you probably, I'm not sure, maybe you can do it.
So for most of these, if it's attached.
You can do it?
If it's attached, it's exempt. If it's detached, it needs a CDP first, and you're going to deal with TDSF and whatnot.
So, so let's be clear for everybody, okay? There's two ways to have an ADU in Malibu. Build it in your attached garage or it's attached to your house. Or you're very, there's a third way. If you had unfortunate, you know, an unfortunate situation and you had a disaster. Or you're super wealthy and you have a sprawling space of land acreage and you have a lot of TDSF and space around you, you can build it. But most people cannot.
Not a lot of TDSF.
Most people in Malibu, their lots are built to their full TDSF.
But let me.
Oh, I would doubt if half.
Is that, so is that?
Yeah, I would disagree with you on that. I would say the majority of them are not.
Okay. Let me ask you though, if, if I don't want to upset a bunch of people and so I say, I just want to build a 2,000-square-foot house. Can I get approval? And everyone gives me approval. And then I say, oh, and I want to add a little kitchenette and two bedrooms right here a couple of years later, but it's an ADU. And then I want to add over here another ADU for, for another reason. Okay, I get one, but now I've just added another 1,000 square feet for my ADU that no one had to approve.
No, everybody still approves it, Marnie, that you still have to go through fire and building and safety and building codes and engineering. Engineering and bio soils and all the whole thing, you know? They come and, you know, the whole deal.
Okay.
You know, you can't just build it.
Okay.
But could you get a permit for it is the question, right? So.
So are we good with the first two?
Yes.
Attached to detached and the differences. There's two more in, in the code.
Which are multifamily.
Correct.
I don't need to hear that.
Right, so on the limited detached, right? If it's 800 square foot, it's exempt.
John, do you need the multifamily?
Well, the multifamily, I think, is nuts.
Yeah, well, we want to ax the multifamily, but apparently.
I think taking the hamburger man and putting 16 units on that lot is nuts, okay? And there's a lot of those lots in Malibu.
Well, anyway, as, as I understand it, people haven't been banging down planning's door for 80 years.
They were here last month trying.
Oh, well, that was not.
On the, on the eight max on those, that's state law. So you're welcome to discuss it, but HCD will reject on that. I can tell you that the projects I've seen elsewhere where they could put the eight, very few are going up to the eight.
Well, I can tell you this. I have an ex-partner who is now doing partnerships to build 16 units on 6,000-square-foot lots in LA.
John, that's the first thing you told me when I first started here. I, I hear you.
I can put you in touch with him and you can make money.
Okay, so I move, I'm going to make a motion to move forward with passing this.
So we have a motion on the floor that you've seconded?
I'll still be second.
I have an, I have a comment. I'm just envisioning how this could be so disastrous. Can you explain how this wouldn't be so disastrous?
It's not achievable.
I wouldn't worry about it. It's very hard to.
It's very hard to achieve this.
To achieve this.
Commissioner Riddick.
It's about the same as building a new house.
Commissioner Riddick can tell you better than others. It's difficult. Go ask your friends and neighbors if they want an ADU. I think most people don't, they're, they're very expensive. And I think with the city and the rebuild process, people are even less desiring of building backyard apartments. Are you going to see them? You will, but, you know, in the other cities I work in, they're not having people rushing to planning to put these things in. What I am seeing in the cities are some of the conversions of garages and then dingbat apartments, if you know what those are, where you park underneath the overhang apartment. They take out those and build them under, you guys don't have them that much here. So it is a big change, but.
What was the reference of that style? Was that a dingbat?
Dingbat. Skylar, I was not calling you that name, but.
So on a more, in a more positive way, let's say somebody is a fire, you know, their house burned down and they want to move back to Malibu before their house is fully built. Can they build an ADU that they don't have to ever tear down that they can have as part of their house when it's built and they can live in the ADU while they finish building their house?
From what Ton said, no, the.
You won't get a certificate of occupancy.
You can't live in an ADU while it's rebuilt.
You can get temporary housing under our current, current laws.
But then you have to tear it down.
I would make this as a general comment, Marnie, in relation to that, in relation to the disasters that we've dealt with. If the council would figure out a way to allow a permitted guest house or ADU to become temporarily compliant or something so that they could live in it while they're building the main house, maybe that would, maybe there's appetite for that and that's a smart decision.
And we've already.
Because of the complicity is what you're talking about.
We've already done that with the modular, mobile home during construction. You have to a certain period of time, you could use it. And then once you got your house, you got to make it permanent. But it was done all the time in Woolsey.
Yeah, and we're here, right now, we're here to ratify, get the city into compliance.
We're going to do that with a roll call.
Yeah, not expand the ordinance. Rebecca, go ahead.
Okay, I think this captures everything. It's a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2565 as amended, one, section 17.44.040, definitions, revising for cleanup and fine tuning of existing language, two, section 17.44.070, process and timing substituting.
Could you just go a little slower, Rebecca? I'm trying to hear every word.
Okay, I will, I'm sorry, I was trying, I thought I might be. I'm, I'm reading initially the things that were read in earlier by Joyce.
But can I ask you a question?
Yes.
We're recommending, we're not passing, right?
You are adopting a resolution which will provide recommendations to city council and we'll get to that language at the end. Okay, so do you, do you want me to repeat the earlier part?
Well, I just want to say, the, the items that Joyce read at the beginning, are those in front of me somewhere or are those totally?
It was the 25-foot state law, which she had up on the screen.
Oh.
20-foot road.
Okay, so we already, we already talked about that, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so number two, section 17.44.070, process and timing substituting the phrase approve or deny in place of act upon. Section 17.44.080, general ADU and JADU requirements or modified to require deed restrictions for JADUs only, removing language on how height is measured because it is captured elsewhere in the code. Section 17.44.090, specific ADU requirements, removing language on how size is measured, amending language to ensure a minimum 800-square-foot ADU would be allowed and addition of lot coverage requirement. Section 17.44.060 approvals, revising the introductory paragraph to state, the following approvals apply to ADUs and JADUs developed under this chapter because the city of Malibu lies entirely within the coastal zone. ADU applications may be subject to the requirements in the local coastal program in addition to the provisions of this chapter. If an ADU application is exempt from the need to obtain a coastal development permit, then only this chapter governs. And six, recommending that the city council approve zoning text amendment number 25-003 for an amendment to the Malibu municipal code to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units. Does that capture your motion?
Did I?
Yes.
Wait, did I miss this? Did she add in all that language that I gave her?
She just read it.
Yeah, it sounded so smooth, Rebecca. Like it's always been there.
Well, that's how good you are. Okay, so Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons.
Yes.
Commissioner Maza.
I abstain. I don't want to have my name on something that's going to kill somebody.
And motion carries.
Can I make a motion to adjourn or do we have?
We're circling back to earlier in the day.
All right, so we are moving back to. DUE, oral and written communication from the public. Do we have any speakers? Okay, we'll give her a second to do a card.
Actually, Joe, you may fill out the card following your comments so that we have it for the record.
I know that we just spoke about this, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to let you know that the 800-square-foot ADU is detached, is exempt. So anybody can do that, just so you know that.
Only in the fire zone.
No, anyone in Malibu, isn't that correct, Joyce? I think, yeah. That's all I was just trying to explain.
Tyler answered that because I'm not familiar with the provisions with the fire rebuilds.
Also, real quick, we can answer this for like 30 seconds. That item is done and we can't take comment on something that's already done under the Brown Act.
So it's not exempt from a CDP. In the fire zone, the LCP does not apply. So you can get it there, but it just falls into the class one category. So detached ADU is still subject to the LCP in the non-fire areas. Is that all you wanted to say, Joe? You got to go to the mic, please.
If you have additional comments that are not related to an item on the agenda, you can state them. But anything that, anything that is on the agenda cannot be discussed.
17.44.060.
Anything that is on the agenda should not be discussed at this time.
That's all you wanted to say?
That's all there.
Okay. All right, all right, anyone online?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, let's move on to Commissioner's comments. I'd like to go first. During the last hearing, we had a project on Broad Beach Road and I brought up some issues from the project and I wanted to apologize because in my interpretation of reviewing public records on the initial permit of the house, I left out the square footage of the garage because it didn't show up on the permit, which made it seem like the project had significantly more cumulative development happening on it than it actually did. So I wanted to go ahead and say I'm sorry for that. And also wanted to, I think that it turns out there was a septic system that was added in 1996 that I did not see. And I was doing my whole interpretation based upon a septic system that was put in in 1958. And that's it. Anyone else?
Go Sharks, really excited about school starting this week.
I do have something. Hub the Handyman passed away, so. Old local.
So I'd like to make a motion to have this meeting in honor of Tom Torres. He passed away.
Really?
Yes. Okay, and consent, we're going to move on to Community Development Director report.
So Yolanda had to go home unfortunately, so I will do her report for her. The Community Development Department is pleased to welcome a, you see, I see the PowerPoint up there. We're pleased to welcome a new senior planner, Patrick Aches, who came to us from Beverly Hills. We're stealing all their best planners. That's two in a row now, both our senior planners for the city. He worked for not only Beverly Hills, but Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, and he has a lot of experience in the coastal zone, has a Masters of Planning from USC, and he comes with a wealth of knowledge with long-range planning, very, very well-versed in ADU ordinance and housing elements.
Is he staff or contract?
Full-time staff.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next slide, please. Going over some of our rebuild information. So our Palisades Fire rebuild update. As of today, we have 62 pending planning smittles. That's up from six from the last time we saw you. And 44 were, have been approved. That's up five from the last time. As for the types, all, all 44 that have been approved are the like-for-like or like-for-like plus 10%. We have seven projects that are in building plan checks with one building permit issued. It was a beachfront lot. Those are a very big achievement for us. And in terms of processing times, the average time to get your first round of corrections is 12 days for planning and your decision will come within 42 days on average. In addition, we've followed up with, over 500 properties have came to see us. That's seven, up 17 from the last time and 652 follow-up visits, which is up 62 from the last time. Next slide, please. If you wanted to contact us, we're available at the, at 23805 Stewart Ranch Road that's just across the way here. 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We highly encourage you all to come visit us at the Rebuild Center. We will give you a start-to-finish guide on how to get you back into your home. So please, please come visit us. You can also make an appointment at malabourebuilds.org/appointment. Next slide, please. And just a very brief update on the Woolsey Fire update. We have a total of 365 projects approved in planning and 99 are still under construction with 205 homes that have received a certificate of occupancy. And since our last meeting, we have three more Woolsey Fire rebuilds that have received a certificate of occupancy.
I have a question about that. Do you want to make an announcement about the expiration for achieving Woolsey permits? Is there, is there a deadline coming up for that?
So Woolsey was, so the code that was adopted, you have to get your building permit within eight years from the date of the fire.
Okay.
So, but you would have already had to have planning approval by then. Now, there are an amount of properties that were allowed an extension. I don't know if Rebecca has the number, but specifically.
I believe there were 21 properties that were extended.
21 properties that received an extension from those. But in general, at this point, the only, if you had not received your planning approval or if you did not get your, that, that extension that Rebecca mentioned, then it has expired for the lot. And those are, that are still working towards their building permit or still within the timeline.
Can you clarify some of the terminology of what that all means? Can you clarify some of the terminology of what that all means? Rebecca has her hands up, too. Go ahead.
I was just going to, I just looked it up really quickly because I thought I knew it, but I didn't want to mistake it. The deadline to obtain building permits for anyone that did not receive an extension is November 8th of 2026.
So people that have planning verification are okay still?
If, if they go through, if they pull permits by November 8th, 2026.
So keep going, and as long as you have, get your building permits by that deadline, November 8th, 2026, then you'll be good to go.
How many homes did we lose in the Woolsey fire? I know we have 365. Okay, 464. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
As clarification, our statistics pages for all of the different fire rebuild types are referencing specifically the single-family residences, so you're not going to see reflected commercial properties or multifamily dwellings in these numbers that are currently provided. These are, these are specific to the single-family residences.
I didn't know commercial properties burned during Woolsey, but...
Tyler, Tyler, there's, there's still several houses on Coast Highway that haven't been cleaned up. What's going on with those?
From the most recent fire, there were a number that we had to bring to court, and we got court orders to allow technically Malibu to partner with other government agencies. That's FEMA and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. All of the properties that we were approved for by the courts were turned over to them, and they're supposed to have all of the cleanups done, not just here, but Palisades, Altadena, et cetera, by the end of August. That's a soft deadline, but it should be somewhere around then.
Tyler, I heard you say that there was one permit that's been issued for Palisades Fire. There's a home that's being framed on La Costa, up on the hill there. Is that existing permit that is going on, or what's the?
There were a few. I'll have to look in, if you have an address, I can look into it. But there were a few that, they were like remodels in the door, and if the structure could have existed, or they're doing damage repair. But there was one, I don't remember if it's in La Costa, but those were on that area, where they had a remodel permit, and majority of the structure survived, and they're coming in to get their damage repair permits, but otherwise they have permits to do work.
Well, the one, the one you're referring to is big-framed, whole banana.
Yeah, it's a brand-new house.
Brand-new house.
Yeah, well, I have to look in, you know, there's other permits in those areas that, you know, they've received coastal development permits, and so if, I have a specific address, I can look into it, but yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, let's see. What do we have? Consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar. One second.
All right. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yep.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Looks like we're done, huh?
Who we adjourn?
Would you like to just introduce item 8A and ask if anyone has any further comments?
8A? Okay. All right, I thought we did that. Yes. We'll forego Commissioner comments. So as I said, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in the name of Tom Torres, and who is the...
Howard. I don't know. Hub the Handyman.
Hub the Handyman. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.